To order at 7:05 PM, and I ask that you join me in standing if you're able to say the pledge allegiance and for a moment no silence. I apologize. Again, I apologize for the delay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Official meeting notification, Mr. Stossen.
Public notice of all meetings has been given by communication from the superintendent's office to the public, to those news media who have requested such notices, and to the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, Northwest Now, Express News, and West Bend Daily News. Public notice has also been posted in schools throughout the district and on the GSDWI.org website, as well as cable TV access channel 96.
Roll call, Jane.
I got it. Satterberg?
Here.
Medved?
Here.
Loth?
Here.
Gordon?
Here.
Myself is here. Reiman?
Here.
Amanda Remodelly.
And Larson?
Here.
Thank you. Item number two, approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda with the addition of item nine for adjournment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? No discussion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. Item three, citizen comments. We have four individuals sign up tonight. Would Amelia Antrim, please come forward? And hopefully I pronounced your last name properly. Great. Good evening and welcome.
My name is Amelia Antrim, as you said. I am here today to express my deep dissatisfaction and disappointment as a parent of a virtual fourth grader at MacArthur Elementary. This year is absolutely not what any of us envisioned when we first picked up our kids from school with their Chromebooks in hand back in March. All of us have had to adapt to this new reality over the last eight months and to make sacrifices and accept changes. I know there are no easy decisions here. Despite that, it seems that the school district has not taken the necessary steps to stay out in front of us, and in many ways, have had the last eight months to consider what to do. I chose to keep my children home for a variety of reasons, even though in many ways it is the more difficult option. I hoped that I was going to have the district behind me in that choice. After all, it was the district who even offered that option. But that's not been the case. There have been delays in getting parents' information about what the virtual option would look like, conflicting information coming from the district and the individual schools, consistently shifting timelines, and my son even having to return his mouse to the school because they needed more for the in-person students, despite the fact that he's doing his learning 100% online. At each turn, it has felt like the virtual program has been an afterthought. As we approached the second quarter, I made the choice to continue to keep my kids home as cases of COVID have surged in our state, hoping that the district would still be behind me. Last week, I received an email from Dr. Williams stating that while staffing and the number of classrooms will remain the same for the second quarter, class sizes in third and fifth grade, already large to begin with, have increased. Three days later, I received a generic email addressed to the fourth grade parents informing us that things would not remain the same. My child would, two weeks into the second quarter, be transferred to a new teacher from a new school with new classmates. Imagine for a moment what it's like to be that nine-year-old. This year has already been so much for our kids to handle. Many of our children are experiencing deep loneliness and anxiety around all of the changes. And now you're making yet another change, an unexpected one. You're pulling him from the few friends that he already gets to see, kids he has been with since kindergarten, and putting him in a new class and a new teacher that he's never met before, in the middle of the year. You're taking a teacher, Mrs. Brewer, who has done an incredible job of adapting her curriculum to the virtual setting and asking her to change everything yet again. She's done an incredible job of making my son feel comfortable learning in this setting. She's taken the time to help the kids be successful this year. She has invested energy into their well-being. She put in the time to have parent-teacher conferences with many of us to get to know our home situations. All of that is lost as we essentially start over for these students. For the new teacher they'll be placed with, you're asking her to take on more students in an already full class to adapt to a whole new dynamic with new personalities. These are students she has never met, whose abilities and needs she is not familiar with, and giving her no time to make those adjustments. The quarter has already started, and you are changing her class considerably. For the students already in the class at Amy Bell or County Line, you're asking them to make a huge adjustment too, to adapt to that dynamic, to give up some of the limited individual time they have, because there are more students needing the attention of the teacher, students they have also never met. As a parent, I feel blindsided and incredibly frustrated. I am doing my best to support my child this year, to make things as safe and easy as possible, and I'm having to fight against the school to be able to do that. I had to break the news to my son that this little bit of normalcy he has is gone too, that he may not be with his friends, the few friends that he still has in his class, and that he'll have to start with a teacher that he does not know, that he'll be asked to suffer through yet another upheaval this year. Our kids, whether they are virtual or face-to-face, are going through so much right now, and they need to be supported by a community around them, and the virtual kids are not getting that. They have no interactions with their face-to-face peers, and now they're being taken from even their virtual peers. This is not acceptable, and it is certainly not in the best interest of my child. Rather than hiring another teacher, the district is shuffling around students like numbers in a spreadsheet, and it is not okay. My child deserves better that, better than that, and so do his peers. I understand that difficult decisions must be made, but please do not make those decisions at the cost of these children. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie and Jeff Horrigan, please. Good evening and welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Good evening. We are the parents of two students here in Germantown, a fourth grader at MacArthur and a seventh grader at Kennedy. We've chosen the virtual option to keep our kids safe and to open up additional space and resources at school. So first, we'd like to pose a hypothetical question for all of you. If you were given less than two weeks' notice that your fourth-grade child was going to not only change teachers and classrooms, but be changing schools in the middle of the school year, and then the classroom that they're moving to would be double the students, what would you do? We'll let you think about that as we tell you about our experience, because this is our reality. Our daughter, along with 11 classmates, are being moved from MacArthur to another virtual class in Germantown, effective November 16th. This move is being made as a solution to a staffing issue in MacArthur's third grade. Class sizes have grown too big due to student movement from virtual to face-to-face instruction. As the chess pieces are moved around, more than 100 families will be affected, as well as six educators. We have three main concerns with this strategy. First, our virtual students are not receiving equitable treatment and integration into their school communities when compared with their peers. They are being shuffled around at a moment's notice, at the expense of their education and well-being. This is not at all in line with the guiding principles that were adopted by the Germantown School District this summer with the return-to-school plan. Specifically, the social, emotional, and mental health needs of the students changing schools are not being taken into consideration. They are not being offered a stable and consistent learning environment. We know there will be curriculum changes as they move to a different school. They will constantly be playing catch-up. Changing schools mid-year can negatively impact academic achievement, test scores, and school engagement, not to mention the social difficulties that come with being the new kid in class. These are real consequences that will have an effect if this decision is not amended. Second, as we continue to live in an ever-changing world with COVID, how does this decision affect our children in the future? In the third quarter, when more students come back to class, there will be a class-size issues in the fourth grade. There are already class-size issues in the fifth grade. The current situation is just shuffling kids around when it's obvious that they will need to be shuffled again in this future. Please consider hiring the staff to meet the needs now, rather than push off this issue, which will certainly come back around in the very near future. Choosing otherwise will potentially have a negative effect on even more kids. Lastly, but definitely not least, we are concerned about the well-being of our educators. They are pouring their hearts and souls into teaching our kids. They plan out their classes months at a time. They work long hours without complaint. They love our kids. We appreciate the service in this challenging environment. We support them. We need to support them by providing the staff needed to effectively teach our kids in the current situation. Quite frankly, without them, we have nothing. Over the years, we have had an amazing in Germantown schools, especially at MacArthur. We appreciate all that you are doing in this challenging time to keep everyone moving forward. Please reassess this decision that will affect so many families in the district. Please consider hiring a third-grade teacher and pay close attention to where other staffing is needed. As parents, we are tired. We know our educators are tired, our district staff is tired, and I know all of you are tired. Yet, we still need to work together to find the best possible solutions and have the best possible outcomes for our kids, and we need to do that together. Thank you. So I'm going to hand it over to my husband, who's going to speak on behalf of one of our friends who is at home dealing with COVID and could not be here.
This is from Sarah Paul, who's the parent of a fourth-grader at MacArthur. My name is Sarah Paul, and I have two children in virtual learning at MacArthur Elementary. I would like to voice my concerns regarding the district's decision to separate the fourth-grade virtual class at MacArthur into two separate classes. Germantown is an amazing district, and we've been so pleased with our children's education. When making the decision between sending our children to school face-to-face five days a week with limited space to keep safe distance or to navigate the school year virtually, our family chose, for safety's sake, the virtual learning. We knew that it would be a challenge for all of the children who chose virtual, but they have adapted very well under the circumstances, and this is reassuring. Kids are resilient and can adapt to change, but doing virtual learning is already a challenge in itself, and making this change has already caused so many challenges to our children's emotional state. Many of my points were brought up by my daughter between her tears of not understanding why the district would do this. Many of these children have gone to school together since kindergarten, and it's one thing to see their classmates via a computer daily, but to split up this class abruptly when we have already started the second quarter is quite shocking. I personally spoke with the principal after he called me in response to the concern about the disconnect between the virtual children and the in-person children. He reassured me that he now realized that there is a problem, and it would be addressed. Clearly, this is never how I expected this to be addressed, taking these children away from their classmates, school, and teacher, an option that is the absolute farthest away from connecting these children. To be honest, this is so beyond disappointing that I can't even put into words how incredibly sad I am for our children and how they are being treated. It feels as though the conversation we had was nearly empty words, and it's very concerning. This not only means that my child will have another teacher for a set amount of time, but also means that my child will not see their favorite special teachers that they look forward to seeing each week. They will have a new classroom teacher, new classmates, and they will not be a part of the MacArthur family anymore. This is not acceptable. We had to give the district notice many weeks ago about our decision to continue with this virtual or choose face-to-face. So why is it that two days into the next quarter, we are suddenly being informed of this change? We had asked at the PTA meeting point-blank about this possibility, but we were reassured that it did not look as though anything would be changing. Why is that, after the quarter has already started, where we're informed of this change? The mere fact that you are taking Mrs. Brewer, who has been incredibly prepared this year in her curriculum planned out and all ready to go on Schoology and Google Classroom, and uprooting her to another grade level not only affects my child and the other children in the current fourth-grade virtual class at MacArthur, but also 100 or so other students from four elementary schools in Germantown. This seems to be a complete disregard for our virtual students. Taking their teacher away from them is not only detrimental to their mental well-being, but taking them away from their current virtual friends is even more critical. These kids need to feel that they are part of their community, their school, and their society. They definitely do not. If another third-grade teacher was hired for in-person learning at MacArthur, this would have alleviated much stress for the many, many students this change now affects. Respectfully, as a parent of a type 1 diabetic child who has struggled this year with her mental state of mind in virtual learning, we have come a long way to get her to that mental state that she is now in. This change will be detrimental to her continued well-being. I ask that you rethink this change. I ask that you hire a teacher for the third-grade in-person classroom at MacArthur to keep the consistency of these children. Thank you for your time. Sarah Paul.
Thank you. Tracy Pollak?
Good evening and welcome. Good evening. Thank you, Tracy Pollak. I'm here tonight to speak about the teacher classroom assignment change that's occurring at MacArthur Elementary School for the third and fourth grades. I know others have already spoken regarding their specific situations. Tonight, I'm advocating on behalf of my third-grader, Abigail. Our family has had to make the choice to be virtual due to a high-risk medical situation in our family. It's not our preferred choice, but it is one that we've had to accept. We have been fortunate in that one of our children has actually thrived in this virtual environment. Our oldest struggles at times, but he does have moments of doing well with the situation as any other 12-year-old boy does. He gives us grief. Our youngest, however, the third-grader, she's had a very difficult time with this transition. As a result of this change in her assigned virtual teacher, the one who's struggled, will see the teacher that she's become comfortable with, has found stability with, who has been the consistent face of school, and has made the best of a bad situation with, will no longer teach her. Want to highlight three points listed in the district's core principles guiding our return. Address the social, emotional, and mental health needs of all students and staff. Ensure meaningful and engaging academic experiences for all students. And prioritize consistency and stability for all students, staff, and parents, while remaining nimble and flexible to the situation. Embedded, though not explicitly called out in those items I mentioned, is equity. Fostering an equitable learning environment for all students that considers mental health needs and prioritizes consistency and stability. That one sentence could have replaced those three items. Anyone familiar with last year's second grade, this year's third-grade group at MacArthur, knows that's a large class that includes a high number of needs, and yet, at the end of last school year, there's a cut of one track, while in a pandemic, maintaining spacing was going to be a consideration. With the reassignments that we've been notified of, it appears that a significant number of additional changes affecting many more students than necessary were made, and what might have been required to solve the issue. The disruption that will occur as a result of these specific changes will fall greatest on the virtual kids. Being part of the virtual family community, we knew we had to prepare for these kinds of moments, just like we knew we would have to constantly advocate on our children's behalfs when it came to feeling disconnected from the rest of the in-person kids and pushing our school's administration to not be complacent with our requests and suggestions for how our kids can still feel connected to the school and their friends. In our case, we're Eagles, and we want our kids to feel like they're still Eagles. So this isn't so much a request for the board as it is for the district administration. For the benefit of my third-grader, and I know this is a long shot, but I would hope that the decision that was communicated out to us in the last week, after the start of the second quarter, would be reconsidered to not affect as many virtual students and continue to provide them with the consistency in their virtual classroom. That being said, I do want to take one last moment to recognize Abby's current teacher, Mrs. Kramer. We have been very grateful to her for the time and attention she's provided our child, knowing how difficult of a situation she's been placed in teaching virtually. She's been invaluable in making the best of the situation for our girl. And other people have also mentioned Mrs. Brewer, who's also part of this adjustment. We are fortunate to have Mrs. Brewer for our oldest, and I echo everyone's comments. She's fantastic. She's well-prepared. I've heard many comments from other people too, how far she's planned out and how she'll be affected by this change as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to comment tonight? Good evening and welcome, and state your name when you get to the microphone. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Michael Spriderman. I have two children at MacArthur, one in third grade in Mrs. Kramer's class and one in Mrs. Brewer's class. And they've been struggling. My daughter is a social-sensitive kid, and she's surviving. And she's, that's because of Mrs. Kramer's work and her connection with her class, and she struggles every day with not being connected with more people. And she burst into tears when she heard this. It broke her heart to think that she's going to lose her friends and not have that connection. My son Ian, he was born with bilateral hearing loss, and it takes him a long time to adapt to a teacher and for a teacher to adapt to him. And Mrs. Brewer has done that amazingly well, and for him to lose that, we're going to lose a lot of progress. And he's done so well, and it breaks my heart to have to take him away from that. And so if there's any way you could change this and hire another teacher, my family would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak tonight? Good evening and welcome, and state your name, please.
My name is Luke Postle. I have a son in Mrs.
Repeat your name, please.
Luke Postle.
Luke who?
Postle.
Thank you.
And I have a son who is in Mrs. Brewer's virtual fourth-grade class at MacArthur. My son has done very well in the virtual environment, only because of the efforts that the students, excuse me, the efforts that the teachers have put into the classes. And changing this setup for him, I fear would be detrimental, not just to his academic learning, but to his social and emotional development as well. It seems as though we've had this COVID situation and virtual situation because of it for some time since last spring, and we've had a lot of time to develop some sort of concrete or at least less changing environment for the students to work in, and that kind of stability is essential for the development of the children. Now, my son is being taken not just from his teacher, but from his class, but from his school as well, and thrown into a completely different environment. And as I said, I fear that that is going to be a setback for him. Additionally, we teach our children through the learning process to communicate, and I'm upset by the way that this change was communicated to us as parents. We received a forwarded email from Mrs. Brewer concerning the upcoming changes. Why, I ask you, why this change wasn't communicated by, excuse me, from the school district, or at least from Principal Williams? There's no reason that this change had to come from a forwarded email from my student's teacher, rather than from the people actually making the decisions. I have heard that the teacher was let go from MacArthur in June due to reduced classroom sizes. Well, now we need a teacher. In addition, it troubles me that the virtual students are the ones that are being jockeyed around and being forced to change when it is in fact the returning students, the students returning to the face-to-face environment, that are causing this change to the virtual students, when it's the families of the returning students that have willingly made a change in educational choice. My son was virtual from day one and continues to be so. We have not changed our decision. I don't know why he needs to be penalized for that by families that are choosing to make a change now. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak tonight? Okay, moving on to item four, approval of the October 26, 2020 Board of Education on October 26, 2020 closed session minutes.
Move to approve the October 26 Board in closed session minutes.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Item five, reports and information items. Student representative report, Mr. Stossen.
Yes, I'm going to hand it over to Tatum Catalano.
Brett, I can't even hear that. I apologize.
I'm going to have
I can hear now.
Tatum Catalano present this.
Thank you. I hope you're all well. So, starting off with Amy Bell. Amy Bell's work with character education has been going really well. They held their first Bell Fest through Google Meet, where they talked about empathy. Their focus will be on responsibility throughout the month of November. Amy Bell is getting into the spirit of giving by holding a food drive to help give back to their Amy Bell community. Finally, Amy Bell students have two Spirit Days in the month of November to look forward to, and include Wellness Wednesday and Fall Color Friday. County Line has been working on their new PBIS focus, gratitude. In order to facilitate this new focus, County Line sent home a gratitude activity with each of their students, and upon completion, they were added to the County Line Comet Galaxy. Among other exciting events at County Line, they recently added a new addition to their playground. Thanks to BCI Burke, three xylophones, a set of pentatonic chimes, and three conga drums are all added to the outdoor play space. Finally, a big congratulations to fifth graders Elizabeth B., Sammy E., Macy B., and Jackson A. for being October Comet superheroes and exhibiting superhero behavior the past month. At Rockfield, they're making the most of all the new safety regulations. For example, music is being taught outside as much as possible, PE is regularly outdoors, many teachers take students outside to eat picnic-style on the warmer days, and teachers seek opportunities for learning outdoors as well. The Rocktober Boo Drive-Thru, sponsored by the PTA, was a huge success. They handed out over 200 treats to students who drove through. Many families dressed up for the event in decorated cars. This week, Rockfield teamed up with Pick 'n Save and the Germantown Fire Department to honor veterans on Veteran Day. They made cards, wrote letters, and drew pictures to add to care packages that will be delivered to veterans in the community on November 11th. At MacArthur, they've had a very busy yet exciting month. Their PTA teamed up with Germantown's Tech Ed Department to build a brand-new playground shed. Under Mr. Sahoyak's direction, the foundation has been forward with the plan Under Mr. Sahoyak's direction, the foundation has been forward with the plan to finish the shed in spring. The PTA held their very first family scavenger hunt, and the family fun continued into Halloween Spirit Week with family fall bingo and a costume dress-up slideshow. The students enjoyed a Halloween Spirit Week, complete with dress-up days, daily trivia questions, and guessing jars, and a family movie. Finally, a trick-or-treat parade was held on October 30th where students and families drove around the MacArthur parking lot to get into the Halloween spirit. At Kennedy, KMS students and staff wrapped up their first quarter and continue to work hard as they begin quarter two. Teachers reported that virtual conferences with parents at the end of October went very well. The KMS PTA held their second virtual meeting of the year with KMS guidance counselors presenting information on G-Talks to the parents in attendance. Ms. Hill Schaefer and Ms. Bell Boom helped eighth-grade students make thank-you cards for veterans to be included in care packages that Pick 'n Save is preparing for them to be distributed next week. We appreciate the perseverance of our staff and students in wearing masks and social distancing at school as we continue to battle rising COVID numbers in Wisconsin. Finally, at Germantown High School, we welcomed new members of National Honor Society at the induction ceremony that was held in the PAC. It was livestreamed to families, other students, and staff so everyone could celebrate the new inductees. NHS also recently held their annual blood drive, and many students at Germantown went to donate blood and help save lives. Spanish Honor Society will induct its new members on November 19th this month. Germantown girls swim and dive are in second place at their sectional meet last week, the boys volleyball team secured a regional championship, and the football team had their final home game on Friday. Additionally, many senior student athletes will sign their national letter of intent during the week of November 11th to the 18th in the fieldhouse. Finally, many clubs at Germantown High School, such as Key Club, Spanish Honor Society, National Honor Society, Youth Futures, and DECA are collecting both notes for veterans in conjunction with Pick 'n Save, as well as non-perishable food to help many food banks in our community. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Lot going on. Questions, comments from the board? Okay, I take it you want to leave, you're not going to stay? All right, have a wonderful evening, thank you. Moving on to item B, Board Work Session Report, Mr. Stausen.
Yeah, I just want to report out, last Tuesday, we, the board, and I met, we had what was called a working session, and went through several different things, but I shared my kind of first four months reflection in the district. We read a part of a book called What School Can Be by Ted Dintersmith, and some of his work is around project-based learning, and some of the, he went through every state and found the most creative schools in each state. And so we had a short discussion on that. And then probably the bigger portion of the meeting was talking about possible revenue-generating ideas for the district, and from evaluating our own enrollment to a permanent virtual option for our students moving forward. We noted that we lost 54 kids to schools that had a virtual, fully virtual option, these are high school students, actually some elementary too, around the state. So we were looking at that. We looked at the possibility of charter school grants that exist if we went that route, self-funded insurance, grant writing in general, increasing that, just looking at our current tech leases, and also the possibility of four-year-old kindergarten. So, anything else from the board?
No, I thought the meeting was extremely beneficial. We got aligned, we shared a lot of topics. We've got a wonderful plan going forward, and I'm very excited about it. So I want to thank you for setting that up.
Welcome.
Comments, questions from the board? I'm really excited about the virtual option, because we don't know what we don't know, and with the pandemic, the board may make a decision that we won't have virtual going forward, and we'll have all in-person for next year. So I think having that option of a virtual would be wonderful, not only for our constituents within Germantown, but also open it up for others outside of Germantown as well, to increase the revenue. So I think it's a great idea, so. Okay, moving on to item six, Transportation Committee, Mr. Borden.
The Transportation Committee met last Monday by a request from the district to Go Right Way. We asked to have the 2020-2021 bus routes and ridership looked at to make the most maximized route space for potential savings. Brittany, she's been working with Colleen, and Colleen's here from Go Right Way, and they presented us with several different options, which is in your background, and I will have Brittany take it over, and she can talk about it. And then Colleen, if you want to come up in case the board has any questions, and then we have a recommendation.
Great, and that's coming to board with a positive recommendation?
We'll have Brittany talk about the options.
Okay.
Sure. Okay, we gave multiple options, and Colleen can come up and speak too if you have additional questions. The options consist of combining some of our routes. So the middle school would have combined, some combined routes in the AM and the PM. The high school would have some combined routes in just the AM. And then MacArthur and County Line, they would take various routes from MacArthur and combine them into one route, and then various routes from County Line and combine them as well, just to maximize the space on the buses. And then, those were three different options, and if those options were put in place for November 30th as a start date, we'd save approximately, or have reductions of cost about $39,000. We would actually start communicating this this week to parents, so they have notification in advance if the change occurs. And then we are going to also, throughout this year, look at additional changes to our bus routes for the 2021, 22 school year. Are there other questions?
Colleen, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Well, I just want to clarify just a couple of things, Brittany. For the middle school, currently, the school district has two single middle school routes that provide transportation home from school at the end of the day, so those two routes would be combined in the afternoon. Those two routes would be able to combine because of the hybrid AB day schedule that we have, and we would be able to keep those ride times reasonable, very close to the maxed-out 60-minute ride time, but that would be something that we would be able to accomplish for you. As far as the high school routes, in the morning, we looked at 12 of the high school routes and were able to blend six of those single highs, those single tiers, the high school tiers, to eliminate six of those in the morning. The middle school, we were able to blend six of the existing middle tiers, the second tiers, into existing middle school routes. And then at MacArthur, only one route would be eliminated in the morning at MacArthur, it would be blended into the remaining MacArthur Elementary routes. And at County Line, four of the County Line morning routes could be blended into the remaining County Line routes. I wanted to just let everyone know that by doing that, some of the children would have 15 to 20 minutes ride time longer, okay? But still well within the 60-minute max time under the transportation policies that the school district has. And that would be about the same at the high school, middle school, and elementary level. The neighborhoods affected would be right within Village of Germantown proper, Lone Oaks, Treetops, Heritage Hills, Catskill, those very densely populated neighborhoods. Yorktown, Windsong, said Treetops already, Old Farm, Rustic Meadows, Sylvan, Lake Park, excuse me, would be the neighborhoods affected. Another option then would also be that on the elementary level only, we could also make those same route adjustments at MacArthur and County Line, so that the routes would be very similar for the students in the morning and the afternoon. So that is an additional option of savings. And Brittany is right, it's just under $39,000.
Okay, questions, comments?
So, Colleen, I assume it's accurate that if, like, a future semester, we have, at the elementary level, more parents decide to send their kids, we may have to readjust if we went down this plan?
Possibly, or be comfortable with more than the current number of students on the bus.
Okay.
You know? Right now, there's one to some seats, there's two students in some seats, you know, the ridership isn't that high. There may be some seats where you'd have to go three to a seat, but the students are all very good about wearing their masks on the bus, and the ride times aren't that long. But certainly, if that would be a concern for the board or the parents, you know, feedback from the parents, we would definitely be able to revisit that. I'd like to add, on the high school level, we all know that a lot of those children start the school year driving, and then as they get their licenses during the school year, they do drive. So if any place where you'd have to possibly revisit, a change would be at the middle school and elementary level. The high school, that one would probably be able to stay.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Further questions, comments? Okay, thank you. We've got a motion.
Yeah, so the Transportation Committee voted, and we're bringing forward to the Board a positive recommendation to implement options one through three as presented with an estimated cost savings of $38,465.
Great, thank you. That's coming to the Board with a positive recommendation, doesn't require a second. Do we have discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, that motion carries. Further updates?
We're just going to keep monitoring and working on it and looking for the most effective positive ways that we can save money with our transportation routes. Otherwise, that's it.
Great, thank you. Questions or comments for Mr. Borden? Okay, thank you. Moving on to item seven, Personnel Committee, Mrs. Larson.
This evening, the Personnel Committee meeting, Committee met, and we discussed several items. The first being the teacher volunteer goal. As you're aware, our compensation model breaks it out to 70% towards the professional development goal, as well as then 30% to a volunteer goal. With COVID and the community restrictions, we are looking to waive that for this year and have all compensation applied towards attaining the professional development goal. So we're coming forward with a positive recommendation to waive the volunteer goal for the 2021 school year and allocate the 30% to meeting the professional development goal.
Great, thank you. That's coming to the Board with a positive recommendation, doesn't require a second. Do we have discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, that motion carries.
The next item was the employee handbooks and several modifications that were made to the language, so it would sync up with actions that the board has taken, such as cash-in lieu for part-time employees being prorated upon their employment equivalency hours, removal of the second shift differential for the custodial staff, needing to check email on a daily basis to enhance communications throughout the district, as well as language surrounding the direct deposit. So we are coming forth with a positive recommendation to approve the proposed modifications to the staff handbooks and move forward with overall adoption for the 2021 school year.
Thank you. That's coming to the Board with a positive recommendation, does not require a second. Do we have discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, that motion carries.
The last item that we talked about was lunch duty compensation at the elementary school level. There was much discussion about how this type of duty is typically handled throughout the school year, and we probably will look at it as to how it factors into overall compensation at a later point. But with all of the shifts with COVID and the various uncertainties that we've had to deal with and safety precautions, we are coming forward with a positive recommendation to provide prorated compensation for the elementary school teachers performing lunch duty in their classrooms during the 2021 school year.
Thank you. That's coming to the Board with a positive recommendation, does not require a second. We have discussion.
I do have a question. I would like to ask the staff if they can find a sustainable solution to this by the end of the semester, as we know we are entering into a budget deficit. I think we need to just figure some things out with this one.
I could not hear that, I apologize.
She wanted us
Can you hear me now?
No, sorry. Sir is going to
I'll repeat it. So Amanda's
And folks, we must look like a bunch of clowns up here. We cannot hear because our speakers are not working here. We, I know you could hear the sound, but we cannot hear it. So it sounds like a vibration back and forth, so I do apologize for that, and it will not happen at the next meeting. I apologize. Thank you.
So Amanda is looking that this really be only for this semester, and that staff figure out a solution for second semester.
Got it.
But our motion will stand as it is, but the goal would be to find another solution.
Wonderful, thank you. Further comments, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, that motion carries.
And that concluded what we discussed at tonight's Personnel Meeting.
Great, thank you. Questions, comments for Mrs. Larson?
Just one thing I noticed for everybody, when the speaker has their mask off, it's quite a bit easier to understand than with it on. So I think it's, you know, for the short time that anyone is speaking, I see Brenda's up next, it's probably a good idea to take your mask off for this evening.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Further comments? All right, thank you, Mrs. Larson. Moving on to item eight, New Business, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Return to School Plan, Mr. Stausen.
Yes, thank you. I'm just going to run through some of the typical slides that we've been going through. So next slide, next one, where the graph is. And this shows every two weeks, we've just been tracking this, and you can see in the gray how it was two weeks ago and the two weeks prior. This week, or as of today, the burden rate, again, this is burden rate of the whole county, and it's, really, everything's comparable to all the other areas, and so we just looked at the four, the main, the four main ZIP codes that come into our district. And you can see that some of them have even, have doubled or even tripled since the last time we had a board meeting. The next slide shows burden on area school districts, and again, burden is the number of positive cases divided by your total population times 100,000, and that gives you burden. And I included the, where schools were at two weeks ago and to where they are now. And if you remember, we've, Germantown's always been kind of in the middle of the pack. We've made a surge to be in the top. This is the one time you don't want to be number one, but we're there. Some of the other districts on here have actually gone virtual. Hartford, for example, just went virtual till November 30th because of, they just can't refill their staffing. Most of their staff, they have a high number of staff out, and so that's part of their reasoning, and that's what most schools reasoning for having to jump to virtual, even if it's one particular school, it's the replacement of staff. Next slide is our dashboard, and our dashboard, you know, this is kind of a week, one-week snapshot, and the one area that we look at, and it seems like every school has taken its turn, where they have higher numbers of positive cases, and I think the middle school, and the middle school's going to talk in a little bit, but they've had 13 people out today. High school's had a ton, not a ton, but they've had a fair amount that High school's had a ton, not a ton, but they've had a fair amount that's stressing the school. County Line, two weeks ago, was in it, Amy Bell, this week have six, seven people out. But overall, from this data piece, the, you know, district-wide in the last full week, we've had 75 positive students, and that resulted in 464 quarantine students. And staff, we've had 29 positive staff cases since last, since last Tuesday. The next slide is just a couple updates, but again, I've got someone here from the elementary, Susan's here from, from the middle school, and Joel from the high school. And I thought we'd start with Joel and have him just come up again if you have any questions for him, and he can let you know where, where things are since the last time we had a board meeting.
I talked too long last time, so do you have any questions? We're in a similar position. Last night with Tammy and others, it was four hours of emails and text messaging with the amount of people we have out. My assistant, who does all the subs, is out. Our registrar is now out, and the grading period just ended. PAC director is out, and we have, I think today it was 15 staff members that were out. So that up there about exhausting our staff, we, when we don't have subs, and I know the question goes to Mike all the time, but it's an issue with all districts, as we said last time. So when we had four teachers without subs, that's five class periods, one duty, and a resource period. So you're looking for 28 slots to fill. So we look internally, but for cost savings and other reasons, we have a lot of people doing overloads. So 20% of our staff this semester are doing overloads. So I know it's a lot of math, but if you think about it, the amount of people that we have to slide into those spots is minimal, so oftentimes we have to ask the same people over and over again. I give them a lot of credit, they've always helped out. But today was a day where with my assistant out, I worked with the assistant principal, secretary to go through, we're hitting a point where it's not going to be, it's not going to be teaching staff members, we put aides in, the dean of students and that. So that was just getting through today. I think all of those people are out for at least a minimum of 10 days. So if we get one back and we lose four, we get one back, we lose two or three or four. So it's kind of been the trend. I guess I don't have too much other commentary to that, other than it's, it's not been fun, and the challenge continues as we come up on the holidays. I'm hoping it'll improve, but the trend isn't looking that great right now, so. Any questions? Tammy, does that summarize it?
Yeah, probably about right.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Joel.
Thank you.
Mrs. Kleimer?
Well, we've managed to maintain routines at the middle school. The kids have done a great job with everything. It has been very difficult with the subbing situation. We had 13 staff out today, and about half of those were related to COVID, either staff that have COVID or had been in direct contact with someone who had. And that's been, we've had, you know, a fairly steady, I guess, progress since the outbreak at the beginning of the year with the eighth grade staff having to be out for that two-week period. It's been pretty steady until last week, and I started to try to reach out and communicate to Mr. Nowak, Mr. Stausland, that I was feeling like we were starting to surge back into those kind of scary places with, much as Mr. Farron just mentioned, trying to get subs. We are having to ask our staff to do an awful lot of filling in those gaps when we have those kind of, that level of absence. So it is very exhausting for people. Everyone's really been great in trying to continue, but you, you start to feel like it may not be a sustainable thing over a long, long period of time. It's just very difficult. But I have to give a lot of kudos to our staff for all that they have been doing to pitch in, fill in the gaps, and help keep Jeannie from crying, because she's the one doing the subbing figuring out every day. So I just have to thank everybody for all their hard work and effort.
Any questions? I got a question. The infamous lockers, did we get that resolved yet?
The lockers have all been, we've posted online all the locker numbers, all the combinations. That's been probably a month to two months ago that that was all done. I think some of the students were a little nervous to maybe go check out their locker situation on their own, so as I've heard about those things happening, I've encouraged our staff to assist the students with that. I've had some parents individually reach out to me to say, my student isn't sure where their locker is, and they need some assistance, so we've guided kids to teaching staff in that case to help them out, to take them to the lockers and help them out.
Thank you.
So everyone does have a locker assigned, and they can use their locker for their coats and anything else they might need. We're just trying to keep it from becoming a place of congregation during the day, but it's more dropping things off at the beginning of the day and then picking them up before they leave.
Okay. Further comments, questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kleimer. And then I have Mr. Williams here to represent the middle, the elementary school.
Good evening. There is some variance across the different elementaries, but just as noted on the slide, Amy Bell has a number of folks that are out, 11 positions that are out, nine that require subs, and there's only been three subs to cover those, so they've been very creative in that regard. Last week, we had to send home a class, just the nature of it, we, the social distancing and masks and whatnot, but the whole class did have to go home. It's been tough to hire for some positions, particularly the three-hour instructional aides slash supervision positions. Those are, those are customarily tough, but in these circumstances, really, really tough. That's pretty much what I've got. Does anyone have any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next slide, please. Rhonda, next slide. So this, this goes to a little bit about what some of the public comment was referring to as the movement that happened, and I just, I have to say, we, we don't make decisions trying to negatively impact people, especially kids. Back in August, when we decided that we were going to let people commit for the quarter versus the semester, because the feedback at the time was, things might be better, we don't want to commit for the whole semester, so we said, okay, we'll do a quarter, we'll let folks decide if they want to stay virtual or, or be in person at the quarter, and we knew, we didn't, we had no, actually, we had no idea what it was going to look like. We actually thought it was going to, we were going to have movement at every school, and we were, we would reconfigure everything to balance as much as we can, and in this case, we really, it was one school, the two grades, third and fourth grade, where the impact hit, but we, like I said, we didn't know. We thought we were going to have to do this at every, every school and possibly every grade. That, you know, we, we believe at semester, however, when we get to January, we're going to have people select for the whole semester, so the commitment is there. We bounced the idea of, what happened is we had a, one of the classes, about half the kids returned to the schools, there was 12 kids left in, in one virtual classroom. And then it caused, another area caused two teachers to have, you know, about four or five kids over their, their limit. And at first, that, those teachers were going to accept those kids in, and then realize that's just, it's way too many kids for that classroom in this day and age, and so we, we thought we were going to get, get through this next quarter without any type of change. When that decision was made, that it was too many kids in their, in their respective classrooms, we had to figure something out, and we didn't believe, being fiscally responsible as well, that one teacher teaching 12 students was where we, where we needed to be. So what I've put together here are the, as of this morning, all the classes, grade levels at the different schools, and that last column in the second, in the bottom half of the slide are our current virtual teachers, and so you can see, like, we're looking at kindergarten, Amy Bell, County Line are combined for one class of 21 students. The other kindergarten classes, MacArthur and Rockfield at 17 students. And as you go down, you can see, like, third grade again, Amy Bell and Mack, 22 students. Another third grade, County Line and Rock, 24 students. And then the two fourth grades now were, I think County Line and Amy Bell, had to be switched to County Line and Mack to put, put that at 26 students. And then the other switches, Amy Bell, Rock, and some of the MacArthur students for a total of 27. Then you can see in fifth grade, we actually have two standalone classes because they have enough students, and then the other fifth grade, Amy Bell and Rock is combined for 20 students. So any questions on the numbers you see? Tom?
Yeah, the Board had received one email saying that there could be, like, 30 kids in a virtual class, so I'm, I'm pleased to see that we're not appro, you know, we're close to that number, but we're not there yet. You know, that we're at 27 max in, in the fourth grade.
Yep. And if you remember, one of our, back in August, kindergarten first grade had numbers of 50-plus, and we had just one teacher there, and so we did add, but that was to get the numbers, you know, in our, our regular board-approved classroom ranges. And so all of these do fit within our, our regular approved ranges for, for class sizes. Okay, next slide, I'm just showing you, this is, again, it's just a point of information, but high school, these are the virtual numbers for second quarter. Average, you go about 25% of our kids going fully virtual. If you remember back, for first quarter, it was about 18%. So there has been an increase in kids going virtual, and I don't know exactly why that is. I think some of it has to do with, with athletics, where kids are choosing to be virtual so they don't mistakenly get quarantined, or because of being close to someone due to contact tracing. So that's just there as a point of information. Next slide is just what's next, and it's, again, we're going to continue to review this at every board meeting. We'll continue to manage the best we can to stay open. We've stayed open a lot longer than I honestly thought we would when we started this back in September. So it's, and we know it's taxing on our staff, and we're, we're trying to figure out some ways to create the gift of time for our staff, so they, they get a breather, because we know that they're giving up their own prep to cover someone else's class and, and balancing all that's required of them to be, for, for most of them, to be virtual and in person at the same time. That's all I have. Thank you.
Questions, comments? Thank you. I do want to thank staff for doing a report out tonight. It continues to be a very challenging situation within the Germantown School District, and likewise with our peer districts as well. We're doing our best, and I know staff is doing their best on keeping our schools open so that we don't have to pivot to a virtual option, but all I can say is that we're very close at some schools to going down that path. And I ask the community, and I ask that our staff too, and all those involved within the Germantown School District, to please do us a favor, mask up, practice social distancing, and if you're sick, stay home. Absent that, it's having a domino effect, which we are experiencing within the Germantown School District. So I ask once again that everybody, when you're outside of the four walls of the Germantown School District, please take appropriate mitigation in place and do the right thing for our community, because it's not going to get any better if we don't go down that Now, there's been some discussion about MacArthur, third, fourth grade tonight. Now, would my colleagues like to have any discussion on that? I know it's very challenging. I know we are looking for every nickel and dime in our budget, but what are your thoughts? Okay?
If the numbers that we just heard from Mr. Stausland are correct, and would he leave only 12 students in a class? I don't see how we can have a teacher teaching only 12 students when we could rebalance some of the other classes to not have as many students in it. I mean, to me, this, this financially makes sense, we, you know, and we can't, well, we don't have the money to hire an additional teacher. You know, we've heard that from our business office. You know, even the money that we just voted to save on the transportation side wouldn't even cover a teacher for the year with benefits.
No, I agree. I just wanted to create the opportunity for some discussion, seeing that we had five people, six people talk about it this, this evening, so. And I understand, I get, I get the numbers, I understand, so. Further comments?
I think one of the things that Brett had messaged us about was potentially incorporating a couple teacher workdays, and so I think I'd like to see that on the next agenda as something to talk about further.
All right. Again, Brett and the entire team, you guys are doing a wonderful job. We did get some good news this morning with Pfizer, and what they're saying, if it's true, at 90% effectiveness, that's great for a vaccine, but from a readiness of that and access to it, there's a protocol in place. Will it get to our community anytime soon? Probably not, but there is a light at the end of the tunnel, which is wonderful. But before we get there, we, again, we still need to do our part for our kids, and wear your mask, practice social distancing, and if you're symptomatic, stay home, so. All right, moving on to item B, discussion and action to approve course name change at Germantown High School. Mr. Stausland?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to have Ms. O'Brien speak to that.
Sure, thank you. Again, John, who's a local teacher at Germantown High School, has approved the name change for the Southern Law and Music class to directly flex the content and the changes that have been taken to the upcoming classes. So the Department of Education approved the course change from law to two criminal justice beginning with 2021, '22 school year.
I'm moved to approve the course title change as presented, beginning with the 2021, '22 school year.
Second. Discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? That motion carries. I'll entertain one final motion.
Moved to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? We are adjourned at 8:15. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. Please drive home safe.